Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, February 26, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Hersi. Ms. Colasetti. Ms. Bishop. Ms. Wilkin.
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here. Next item is approval of minutes from the previous meeting of December 4, 2023. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Chris. Any substantial changes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. There are no additions to the agenda. Next item on the agenda are presentations and public input. Before we get started, I'd like to give the city clerk a couple of minutes to introduce her newest staff member.
We are excited to welcome Mr. Raphael Cho to the city clerk's office as our new executive assistant and deputy city clerk staff. Mr. Cho has a background in governmental social service and public aid, and we are very excited to have his skills.
And you'll be seeing more of him in future weeks. All right, we'll move on to public input. We will begin public input. If anyone wishes to address the Urbana City Council, please step forward. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is Stav Ashur. I'm a resident of Urbana. I addressed the council last week and gave my email and asked for people to approach me or send me an email in order to sit down and draw a new resolution for a ceasefire that would be less inflammatory and less one-sided. I have been approached by several people, but I would like to ask members of the council or members of the audience and the public. I am still missing some people from the, for lack of a better term, Palestinian side. I think we can reach a proposition that will be accepted on both sides. I believe that we want the same things. I believe you all want to stop the violence, but I do not want... Members of the Jewish community have approached me and told me that they support the initiative. Some members have joined my initiative and said that they support it. So while I'm not a leader of the Jewish community in Urbana-Champaign, I believe that the Jewish community does support this, but I do not want it to be a resolution that is brought by one of the sides for approval by the other side. I want it to be something that both sides are part of its creation and can therefore feel more confident in its balance. So I am again seeking members of the council, members of the public, to contact me. I'm going to give my email again. It's S-T-A-V dot S-H-1 at gmail dot com. S-T-A-V dot S-H-1 at gmail dot com. My name is Stav. Please, if you feel you can sit down and discuss some very, very basic things that I believe that we can all agree on, please approach me. Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. My name is Michael Kilcullen, and I am a resident of Champaign, and I am on the Urbana Sister Cities Committee, and it's nice to see everyone again. And I want to speak out about this airport consultant and airport subsidies program idea that you are voting on tonight. I really, really want you to vote no for the current plan as it is written. If you do not want to vote no, I ask that you please, please postpone it. Let us have a study session next Monday and then vote two weeks from now because they are artificially imposing a deadline of April 1st. If we vote two weeks from now, we still can meet their deadline, but we need to talk about this. I have plans, I have maps, I have information about transportation planning that you know that I work on all the time, and I want a chance to make some statements about the consultants and about subsidies in general, about transportation. First of all, as far as the timeline even, like the first notice that we saw in the public is only three weeks ago, on February 2 on WCIA. I cannot even find the information on WICD. How are we already at a point of needing a vote, mandatory vote, within three weeks when it takes us months to do any other transport plans? It's taken us years to get this Weaver Park one-mile extension of the KRT. It's taken us 20 years to get a trail. How are we already at a point, three weeks, voting for something that we have not even seen a plan for? Also, this plan they're trying to do for supposedly maybe a ULCC, ultra-low-cost flights, to me is a flight, is a race to the bottom. This is not sound economic policy, I don't think, as far as economic development, to really build our city. This is putting money into Orlando's economy because our people will fly down there cheaper, and they'll spend their money there, not here. We need something that is Mainline carriers such as American and Delta and United and all those others. If we remember back in 2004, 20 years ago, the EDC tried this idea before. We used to have three hubs, remember? And we had Detroit, St. Louis, and Chicago. They wanted a fourth hub for Cincinnati, three flights a day subsidized, but not the other three hubs. And then we lost United because Cincinnati was getting subsidized. Then Delta, of course, pulled out when the subsidy program ended. And then Northwest Airlines was bought by Delta months after they left Willard, and then Delta's like, oh, now we're back in town. Oh, we don't want to be here. And they canceled that, and we got stuck with American Airlines, the Chicago only at that time. And so we paid extra as a subsidy to be worse off. And I think this nebulous idea of some airline that we don't know the name of to some destination we don't know yet, and in some time, maybe after 2025, because we don't need the money today, is not what is supposed to be supported by the taxpayers. It's not what they want to vote for when you guys are reexamining the Royer Hotel again and again and again. Taxpayers want details. We don't want nebulous.
Hello, my name is Stephen McGuire. I'd like to speak on two issues. One, Michael has a very good point about the nebulous nature of some of the information put out about these initiatives. I see oftentimes on your agenda various ordinances proposed without the full text of that ordinance. I would like to speak in favor of, I know there is plans for some kind of low-cost housing or homelessness or tiny houses or something of the like that has been proposed. There was pre... The neighborhood, primarily, my understanding was, agreed with it, and the concerns were ambulance routes. I would like to argue that if it is a tiny house development or something of the like which we need, to not fall in any of the failed ideas of limiting time that can be spent there, which has caused problems in California. Also, on the front of the Israel-Palestine resolution, people have proposed that we need a public space to debate these issues and that it should not be done in the resolution with the city council. I would propose that we do both, that we debate the resolution continuing at these city council meetings, but that if the city can, or others in the community, can provide some space where we as a community can discuss this very important issue, that would help. Thank you.
Bon.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Terry Barnes. I've lived in Urbana for 10 years, and I'm a professor at the U of I. And I'd like to say something about the ceasefire resolution. I came to this meeting for the first time two weeks ago, and it inspired me to come back and say this. I appreciate the council listening to everybody, and thank you for this time. I've read and signed the existing resolution. I find that it's reasonable, factual, compassionate, and even-handed. It calls for an end to bloodshed, and I urge this council to pass it. Next, I want to say something to my neighbors who spoke against the resolution when I was here two weeks ago, and it's something I never thought I'd have to say. I am not anti-Jewish. I've spoken up in defense of Jewish people when nasty stereotypes were spoken, when, as an unhappy teen, I ran away from a home. I went to the friend, to the house of dear friends who are Jewish. They fed me and sent me home. My best friend in the world lives in South Africa and is the daughter of people whose families were wiped out in the Holocaust. In the week of October 7, when I was teaching a class, we took an entire class period to reflect and anonymously share our feelings of uncertainty and grief. This was a decision I took as an educator. I respect Judaism, and I'm not anti-Jewish. As a historian, as an African-American, however, I am anti-Zionist. I do not believe that one group of people has the right to push another group off its land, restrict their movement, make them into second or third-class citizens, and disregard the rules of war that have been put in place due to so much bloodshed in the past. Gaza today has been described as a living hell. The Urbana City Council should pass this resolution for the sake of our common humanity. We are all linked to this terrible conflict in some way. What's happening now is the definition of genocide, and we should stand against it as a community. Of course, the hostages should be returned. It is heinous to torture individuals and their families and communities like that. Finally, the folks speaking against the resolution two weeks ago kept talking about keeping Israel, quote, "safe" by destroying Hamas. I say, this is not and never has been a level playing field, and Israel will never be safe if its people and the people who love and support Israel believe that the deaths of 1,000 Israelis must be paid for with the deaths of more than 30,000 Palestinians. No, no, no. This revengeful death toll will haunt Israel for decades to come and ensure that its sons and daughters will always be in danger. The best way, Israel's safest course is to end the slaughter now and seek a just peace. Listen to the Jewish voice for peace, and the Muslim voice for peace, and the Christian voice for peace, and the whatever I am voice for peace. The slaughter must stop, and the Urbana community should join others across the country and the world in saying so. Thank you.
I am here on behalf of the Graduate Employees Organization Solidarity Committee at the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign. I am here to read a statement that we passed this past December with 83% approval from our members in support of a ceasefire in Gaza. We, the GEO, call on the United States government to use its significant power and influence to bring about permanent ceasefire in Gaza and provide humanitarian aid to civilians in occupied Palestine. We have voted to join the United Auto Workers, American Postal Workers Union, Chicago Teachers Union, Minneapolis Federation of Teachers Local 59, the American Federation of Teachers Oregon, the San Antonio Alliance of Teachers and Support Personnel, UFCW Local 3000, and other labor and graduate worker unions across the country. This must include an end to Israel's over 70-year-long violent military occupation of Palestine, which stands in the way of a just and durable peace for Israelis and Palestinians. We demand an end to the use of our tax dollars, tuition money, and UIUC financial investments which fund and support the deadly bombardment of the Gaza Strip and ongoing military operations in Palestine. We demand an end to the United States' unconditional military, institutional, and financial backing of the Israeli military. We mourn the horrific loss of life and unreservedly condemn the killing, kidnapping, and displacement of civilians in Israel, Gaza, and the West Bank. We mourn the 1,200 Israelis and foreign national workers indiscriminately killed and the 240 kidnapped by Hamas on October 7, and we call for negotiations to continue to bring hostages home. We mourn the, at the time, over 17,000 Palestinians as of December 7, including over 5,350 children as of November 20, indiscriminately killed by Israeli forces, the 256 Palestinians killed in the West Bank, as well as the 7,600 Palestinian political prisoners detained by Israel. We join the UN Human Rights Council and hundreds of human rights organizations worldwide in condemning the war crimes Israel has committed in cutting off food, water, fuel, and medical supply shipments to Gaza. As organized laborers, we will protect workers' rights and their ability to speak up against injustice without fear of losing their jobs, particularly as educators. This is not trivial. Across the country, workers' rights and their working conditions have been degraded and violated. For example, graduate teaching assistants at the University of Texas, Austin, were removed from their positions after they offered mental health resources to Palestinian students. Those students, especially international students, graduate workers, people, and organizations who speak out, have been silenced, disciplined, and attacked. I'll cede my time to the next person.
Sorry, I'm too short for this mic. I will continue reading the statement as another representative of the GEO. We...
Could you please state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm Allison Qassar. I'm another graduate worker at the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign.
Thank you.
And I will add, sorry. We affirm that advocating for Palestinian liberation is not anti-Semitic. We reject the conflation of anti-Zionism with anti-Semitism while also condemning any discrimination against Jewish people for their ethno-religious membership and their religious expression. We stand with all workers here in Champaign-Urbana who have been subjected to a climate of surveilled speech and increased anti-Palestinian and anti-Arab racism, anti-Semitism, and Islamophobia. We reaffirm our commitment to the safety, rights, and well-being of our members and community. That is the end of the GEO statement. I'd also just like to add, on a personal note, I am a descendant of Holocaust survivors. I have seen this being framed as an issue of Jews versus Palestinian advocates or Jews versus Muslims, and I believe that that's a false framing, one that only hurts Jewish people worldwide. As someone who grew up with the stories of how people, both Jewish and non-Jewish, helped my family to survive as they fled Germany, I think that it is my duty, my family's duty, the duty of the people around me, to continue to help people survive this conflict, and that to do so requires humanitarian ceasefire. Thank you. I'll yield my time.
Thank you. I'm Mark Ansel, and I spoke before at the first meeting. I'm, of course, a long resident of Urbana, but I won't talk about how long. At the first meeting, I said I didn't think that this council ought to take up this issue of international relations, international affairs, and international disputes. I felt it was beyond the responsibility of the council, and I also think it's beyond the expertise of the council. Although you all may have learned much over the past several weeks, I still think that you probably have scratched the surface, as many of the people in this room have. This is one of the most complicated issues ever. Passing resolutions like these, if you do, I began to think about who you are speaking for, should you pass any such resolution. Obviously, you're speaking for the city of Urbana. You're speaking for the people of the city of Urbana. And I wonder if you think, and whether or not it's appropriate, that you're not speaking for all the citizens of the city of Urbana if you should pass this or any such resolution. And I wonder if it's appropriate, on these international issues, that you speak for some of the citizens of your city and knowingly refuse to speak or recognize or acknowledge or be concerned about the other citizens of Urbana, who would very much have a different point of view and a different feeling. Urbana's citizens are clearly divided, as are many across the country, and by now it should be plain that that is so. Are you content and comfortable to speak for half of your city and offend the other half of your city? I hope not, and I don't think that you really are. Would it make things better for the city or worse for its citizens if you did that? I think it's plain that it would make things worse. Will it change our federal government's policy? I don't think so. I know, and you know, if you follow the news at all, that our federal government has been working very hard, negotiating very hard, putting efforts on the table to get a ceasefire and return of the hostages. You may well know that that offer had been made about two weeks ago to return the hostages and have a ceasefire, and Israel accepted those terms, and Hamas did not accept those terms. So our federal government is working. Finally, I think that the delay that's gone on since I spoke to you the first time has done nothing but harm to the city and its citizens, who are so very divided. At this point in time, I'm of a point that you probably ought to make a decision. You ought to decide if you're going to take this up, which I don't think you should, and you certainly shouldn't take up a one-sided resolution, because if you did that, it would really just make things worse for the people who live here, the people who you're to serve. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chris Zelli. I'd like to start today by just seconding everything that Michael had to say about the airports. I think anybody who is unfamiliar with the role low-cost airline and low-cost tickets have played economically and in the history of this country really hasn't done an American history lesson. We can look back to Reagan. We can look back to the previous oversight federally. Letting, chasing the cheapest ticket is just absolutely destructive. Putting up a huge fund of our money to bring in the cheapest bottom-of-the-barrel business is absolutely something you need to vote no on, and the fact that there is this level of urgency is really atrocious if you vote yes. Reaching out to the Jewish and Zionist members of the community, I really am going to beg you to reach out and grieve with your Palestinian neighbors. You are obligated, under Pikuah Nafresh, to engage and worship the value of every single soul. Every single soul is a world, and you are obligated to hold that higher than any other element of Jewish law, and to not do that is to abandon Judaism. And that is a distinct difference between Zionism and Judaism. And the bigotry that we allow in this community, the hate speech we are giving a platform for, is disgusting. And this is a deeply divided community, and I'm really appalled that some of the... I've been out of town, and I've been listening to the meetings from abroad, and the commentary has been hateful and atrocious from my Zionist neighbors. So please be loving Jews, reach out and grieve with your neighbors. I beg you, I beg you. And we need to talk about fair rhetoric, balanced terms, what a hostage and a prisoner is, and why we are not negotiating for children held without bail and without trial, for minor border-crossing offenses in a draconian system, why we are allowing a segregationist, white supremacist state to talk about peace, to talk about destroying someone, and that if we want to dismantle their hateful government, we're the ones wanting to destroy them. And this isn't, this isn't across an ocean. This is here in this room. The right to self-defense means the right to murder people, to murder children, to ignore that every soul is a world. So please be a loving Jew, please be a loving neighbor. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Don Owen. I'm a history teacher. Two weeks ago, I told you that when I was teaching at Urbana Middle School, I was mandated to teach Holocaust education, and that when I was president of the Illinois Council for Social Studies, we used that platform to lobby for revising and strengthening the Holocaust Education Act in the state of Illinois. I'd like to read you a section of Public Act 94, 478. It's part of the Illinois Collected Statutes 105, 5/27-20.3. "One of the universal lessons of the Holocaust is that national, ethnic, racial, or religious hatred can overtake any nation or society, leading to calamitous consequences. To reinforce that lesson, such curriculum shall include an additional unit of instruction studying other acts of genocide all across the globe. The studying of this material is a reaffirmation of the commitment of free peoples from all nations to never again permit the occurrence of another Holocaust, and a recognition that crimes of genocide continue to be perpetrated across the globe as they have been in the past, and to deter indifference to crimes against humanity and human suffering wherever they may occur." I ask that you're not indifferent. I actually want to thank you for providing this space for people in the community to come and talk and share ideas, because, yeah, some of the rhetoric gets a little heated. It's not more heated than stuff I've seen in here before. It really isn't. I welcome the dialogue. I hope you do, too, but I also ask that you're not indifferent. I do ask that you put it on the agenda, and I do ask that you vote so that we know. Thank you.
My name is Maxwell Rizzo, and I was here two weeks ago. I spoke before in support of a ceasefire, and I'm here again, not only speaking on in support of the ceasefire, but out of sheer befuddlement that we've had the room filled with 50 to 60 people almost every meeting, and yet it still has not been on the ballot. This is by far one of the most important issues in our community of this time. We are actively complicit, actively providing weapons, actively participating in colonization overseas and genocide. These are not my words. These are the words of the International Court of Justice, in that the United States and the state of Israel is plausibly committing genocide. That is not done if it isn't happened. The word plausibly is doing a lot of heavy lifting. I speak also in direct opposition to the members of my community who come up here and say that we are divided. I don't think we are. As a community, we do not support war. We do not support sending money overseas for who knows what. We support keeping our money here, in the community where we need it. There's so much people hurting everywhere, and to actively participate in exporting weapons is complicity. It absolutely is. The United States is the richest country by many metrics. We stand here in a multimillion-dollar building on a multibillion-dollar campus. I come from a million-dollar apartment complex. I have a $1,000 phone in my pocket, and after this debate, I'll go back to my million-dollar apartment and I'll have a nice dinner. You see the parody where we've turned this into a sport of debate when this is literally life and death. Just a few days ago, a man self-immolated in cause in support of the ceasefire, and this is absolutely what it's came to. And this is the necessity of our community to... We need to come out. We need to say no to war. We need to say no to violence. People do not support killing other people fundamentally. I don't subscribe to the ideology that people are fundamentally violent. And another thing is that somebody said that this issue maybe seemed too complicated for us, and to that is just hilarious. Palestinians are educators. They are academics. There is an entire multiple universities in Palestine that were destroyed. We are academics. I am a physicist. I get paid to do research for a living. I think I can do a research. So this topic is not complicated. It is very simple. We are sending an immense amount of weapons. Forty percent, we're the largest exporter of weapons in the modern world. Surely you know that our number-one exportation is weapons. That's a fact. As a community, it is in our community. We are an engineering campus, and the engineering and other actors will maximize the amount of money unless lawmakers and as a community as a whole say that no more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause)
Hello, my name is Kate Krusak, and I am a resident of Urbana. I've come here week after week, and I've listened to so many of our community members tell you different numbers and statistics about how many people have died, and how many churches and mosques have been destroyed, how many hospitals have died, how many children have been shot, how many bombs have been dropped, over and over. And I come here every week, and there's still no action. I don't know what it's going to take for you guys to finally do something. Like Mac said, this is not just a little debate competition, this is lives at stake. What I'm hearing from all of you is that you find it acceptable and okay to kill 30,000 civilians, 30,000 civilians, half of which are children, which I find interesting, because I think if this happened anywhere else in the world, in Europe and America, you would be outraged. But so many of you are sitting here doing nothing, and allowing this to continue without speaking up about it. That's not who I want in office. I don't want people in office who will not stand up for human rights. We are not asking you to take a side on an issue that is complicated. You've had four months at this point to do your research. It's been all over the news, there's many sources you can go to. You've had four months to watch videos, you've had four months to look at news sources and look at experts, and you've remained neutral. That is not acceptable. As elected officials, but also as humans, your first priority should be speaking up for human rights, should be speaking up for your fellow humans. And that is obviously not what you guys prioritize here. So I just want to say that it's... I don't know if I can say it's not too late, 30,000 have died, but there's... You can still use your voice and speak out. It's estimated that up to 80,000 more could die if tensions, if the genocide escalates, including those who die from epidemics due to lack of medicine, lack of food, lack of clean water, lack of hygiene. And that blood will be on your hands if you do not speak up. Everyone who does not speak up, but this blood is on their hands, because we as taxpayers and you as elected officials have the power to do something. So I urge you to please use your voice and do something. We are watching you, and we will not forget your actions here when it comes to election season, I promise you that. We are all learning who you are right now, and you have time to decide who you want to be, but you cannot wait long, because people are dying. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ben Theobald, I'm a resident of Urbana. Obviously, I've been... Obviously, with what's been happening in Gaza, it's possibly one of the worst atrocities for my generation that we've seen, and I'm sure like everyone in this room, we all learned about the Holocaust in schools. I'm sure if you asked anyone, you know, everyone that went to an American school, they learned about the Holocaust, they read about the diary of Anne Frank. If anyone denies the Holocaust, that is anti-Semitism. Now, in countries like Canada, in countries like Germany, and a lot of European countries, denying the Holocaust is actually against the law, and it's anti-Semitic. But when it comes to the Nakba, which... Which the... Sorry, the... Which was... Sorry, I... You... Sorry if I was... I'll just cut to the point. See, this is why I should probably play it a little bit better. Jewish organizations such as If Not Now and Jewish Voice for Peace have been on the front lines advocating and protesting, getting arrested, facing violence, getting tear-gassed and arrested, because they know, through their experience, through what their families taught them, that never again means never again for anyone, for any group of people, any group of ethnicities, all faiths. And that includes Palestinians. I'll just end it right there.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ben Jocelyn, I live here in Urbana. Every week, more unions, cities, nations, individuals, companies continue to recognize that what is happening in Gaza is deeply and fundamentally wrong. At the same time, our federal government continues to facilitate genocide, and so far, our local government, with our mayor front and center, has failed to respond, as people continue to be slaughtered with our tax dollars. When I use the word genocide, I am not using the word lightly. The legal definition of genocide per the U.N. Office on Genocide Prevention and the Responsibility Act goes as follows. "Genocide means any of the following acts committed with the intent to destroy in whole or in part a national, ethnical, racial, or religious group as such: killing members of the group, causing serious bodily or mental harm to members of the group, deliberately inflicting on the group conditions of life calculated to bring about its physical destruction in whole or in part, imposing measures intended to prevent births within the group, or forcibly transferring the children of that group to another group." I was challenged last week when I said that it was ruled on by the ICJ that it was, what was happening there was plausibly a genocide by ruling a 15 to 2. When you go to their website and read their summary, it says, I'm reading directly from the page, after summarizing the thing, it says, "For these reasons, the court indicates that the following provisional measures, by 15 votes of 2, the state of Israel shall in accordance with the obligations under the Convention in Prevention of Punishment of the Crime and Genocide in relation to the Palestinians in Gaza, take all measures within its power to prevent the commission of all acts within the scope of Article 2 of this Convention, in particular, killing members of the group, causing serious bodily or mental harm to members of the group, deliberately inflicting on or causing conditions of life calculated to bring about its physical destruction in whole or in part, and imposing measures intended to prevent the births within the group." That was voted on by 15 to 2, it goes on, "The state of Israel shall ensure with immediate effect that its military does not commit any of the acts described in point 1 above." These things continue to move forward, the court made a very clear decision by 15 votes to 2, that what is happening is plausibly a genocide. It uses those very words to talk about the crime of genocide being committed by the state of Israel against Gaza. This is not an issue that we debate, we do not debate genocide, we must stop it. There are not two morally equivalent sides on what is happening right now. We are funding a genocide, we need to stop doing that. It's very clear, not complicated, necessary. We don't need just representation, we need leadership, we need to ensure the safety of all people in this town. Thank you very much.
Hello, everybody. My name is Mohammed, and I'm a resident from Champaign-Urbana. I stand before you today to urge your consideration and support for a ceasefire resolution regarding the ongoing humanitarian crisis faced by the people of Palestine, particularly those in Gaza. As we deliberate on this crucial issue, it's essential to recognize the profound suffering endured by innocent civilians who are caught in the crossfire of the conflict. Before the escalation in October 7th, let's talk about October 6th. Gaza was nearly reeling under dire circumstances. Nearly 80% of its population lived in poverty, with 2/3 relying on humanitarian aid just to survive. Imagine, if you will, the desperation of a community where almost half of its residents and over 70% of its youth faced unemployment. Daily life was a struggle against a backdrop of 11-12-hour severe shortages of basic necessities. Gaza was effectively cut off from the world, resembling more of an open-air prison than a living community. Now add to this already dire situation the horrors of war. Gaza has been subjected to multiple bombings, bombing campaigns over the years, leaving its inhabitants defenseless against the onslaught of violence. The devastating toll of these wars cannot be overstated: lives lost, families torn apart, and communities shattered beyond repair. We cannot turn a blind eye to the profound humanitarian crisis unfolding before our very eyes. Councilmembers, as we deliberate on this resolution, I urge you to empathize with the people of Gaza. Imagine if it were our own community facing such adversity, our friends, our families, our neighbors struggling to survive amidst the chaos of war. The inhumanity inflicted upon the people of Gaza reverberates far beyond their borders, it touches the very core of our humanity. By supporting the ceasefire resolution, we affirm our commitment to peace, justice, and human rights. We stand in solidarity with the innocent victims of conflict, advocating for their right to live in dignity and security. Let us not be bystanders to suffering, but champions of compassion and empathy. In closing, I implore you to consider the gravity of this moment and the impact of your decision. Let us choose humanity over indifference, compassion over apathy, and peace over violence. Together, let us be a beacon of hope for a brighter future for all. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Amy Odell, and I'm a resident of Champaign. I know what Zionism means to me emotionally, however, hearing last week's speakers that Zionist are fascist, and those that protect them are Nazis, I was a little confused. So I looked up the word in the dictionary, as Zionist is a person who believes in the development and protection of a Jewish nation in what is now known as Israel. The impact of last week's speakers and this week's speakers seems to dehumanize and ostracize the supporters of Israel and its defense forces. I felt that these words were very hurtful, that a person is labeled a fascist just because they support Israel, and a Nazi because they defend its people. This type of rhetoric is not new to Jews. We are made out to be the bogeyman throughout history. The capitalists called the Jews communists, the communists called the Jews capitalists, today colonialists, occupiers, oppressors, fascists, Nazis. We have been the bogeyman for all of society's ills. I hear speakers in this room say, "I am not anti-Jewish, I am anti-Zionist." To me, this means that speakers support the Jewish people to have no place to be protected, and a minority to be hunted everywhere they go, but they do not have the right or power to protect Jewish people on Jewish land. Many Jews in Israel fled from persecution in the surrounding countries because there were not... It was not safe to stay. There are 22 predominantly Muslim countries, and one predominantly Jewish country, yet Israel, a homeland for the Jews, which has a historical significance to our story, our history described in the Torah and the Slinktar Liturgy, we are painted as colonialist occupiers that deserve harm. This is coming from those residents in the United States, which is a country built on occupiers and colonialism. It is such a double standard. Are these same people denouncing the United States and saying its citizens deserve harm like October 7th? Because very few supporting this resolution seem to be indigenous to this land. I hear people stand in this room and say, "From the river to the sea." Let me be clear, that we believe this to be a genocidal calling, that Jews should not exist and be killed anywhere and everywhere, and here I am, hearing calls for my death and my children's death, and I don't know where to go, and the council just sits there. Most of these statements are not new, they have been in the 1988 Hamas mission statement. I urge you to read it and see how many similarities you hear in this room. I want to stop this debate, which to me seems so hateful for Urbana-Champaign. Many point out that we are in a room, talking, and it is good, but there is damage being done. I'm becoming increasingly afraid of my neighbor, I feel that those in my Jewish community want life, want the responsibility to protect life. Israel had created a ceasefire, it was October 6th, and that was broken, not by the actions of Israel, but by the actions of Hamas. My sadness for these city council sessions leads me to question, how can we stop the pain and hatred in this room? How can we come together and agree on something to stop the platform of hatred? If Urbana wants to support nonviolent solutions, create a ceasefire that asks for the whole world to stop violent conflict, including Ukraine, Sudan, Myanmar, and Yemen, or please create a forum to have a dialogue and a ceasefire. I agree with what Stav does, so please email him.
Hi, everyone. My name is Talia Bendo, and I'm a student at the University of Illinois and a proud member of the Jewish community. Before October 7th, a ceasefire did exist. What we are debating now is a ceasefire that Israelis and the Jewish people have always upheld until Hamas decided that it was no more. The people who are here today asking for a ceasefire do not see the whole picture. The Middle East contains 22 Arab nations, yet only one tiny sliver of land that I can call my home. That sliver of land is the only democracy in the Middle East, and that's what America is, right? A democracy, where we can speak freely and do things like we are doing right now. It is possible that the resolution is far more than what the council can handle, and I urge the council to consider this when deciding whether to put this resolution on the agenda. I wish I had more time to prepare a speech, and I will be happy to come back in future weeks. However, for now, I thank you for your consideration of the Jewish people and the community of Urbana as a whole. Thank you for your time.
Hi, good afternoon. Rosa Druker, proud Urbana resident, proud member of the Jewish community. I am here, I was not planning to speak, I don't have anything prepared, but I would humbly say I do not speak for the Jewish community. We are a very diverse community, we are full of complexities, disagreements, diaspora, but I would say, as a member of the Jewish community, I do wholeheartedly support that this council take up a ceasefire and vote in favor of a ceasefire resolution. I understand this is an incredibly difficult ask that this community is making of this council, I understand it is asking you to step far outside of what you normally do on a day-to-day basis and the way that you work to serve this community. However, I believe this is an incredible opportunity for Urbana to show up in solidarity of human rights, to demonstrate ourselves to be a uniquely welcoming community, to focus on equality, human rights, equity, all the things that I think we fight for daily here within the borders of this community. I think this is an important moment to speak out on this issue, and I believe that the majority of Urbana residents do in fact want a ceasefire, and that the impact of taking up this resolution would ultimately make us a stronger and healthier community. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Aviore, and I didn't prepare anything before I came, but the people are talking here just made me feel that I have to answer them. The man sitting behind me here just talked about what happened in October 6th, and what happened with Gaza before the war and everything, described it as an open-air prison. What he forgot or neglected to say is that basically for the last 16 years of Hamas controlling of Gaza, they were building tunnels under Gaza to prepare for a war with Israel. It was used by about $1 billion of aiding money from UNRWA, which is funded by the US mainly, and Germany. And he forgot to say that Khalid Mashel, Ismail Hania, and Musa Abumarzouk, the leaders of Hamas, have jointly accumulated a wealth of about $10 billion, coming from this aid money that was supposed to go to the Gazan people. Now, he didn't say it, nobody here is saying it, but basically Hamas is using the money that the US giving them, and the UN, and UNRWA, and everybody, just to making the head of Hamas wealthier, and to build infrastructure for war. They didn't use the pipes they were given to transfer water from one place to the other to transfer this water, they used it to build rockets. There's thousands and thousands of rockets which was fired before October 7th and on October 7th on Israel. They didn't use the concrete to build houses for the Gazans and the 80% of the poverty in Gaza, they used it to build tunnels, to build tunnels and jails for hostages in Gaza now. Now, all of these people here which are talking about Gaza just fail to mention this crucial issue, that basically the current leaders of the Palestinian people in Gaza doesn't care about the Gazan, about the population in Gaza. They care about making war and making themselves more wealthy. Now, one thing that I want to say, it was another woman here there talking about the population or the children dying... population or the children dying in Gaza. Now, I'm sure she didn't went and checked each of the dying people, but let me just say, according to Hamas' own numbers, on October 19th, Hamas reported a death toll of 307 people, out of which 671 are children. Yeah, 300 people died and 670 are children. On October 26th, 480 people died, out of which 626 are children. Magically, within a week, 45 children were revived. So when they're talking about those numbers, they need to check the facts and numbers.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Each person has a right to speak. Point of order, we need order in the room.
Let's focus on the fact that we are trying to prevent deaths all around.
We need order in the room. This is your first warning, or we'll clear the room. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Barat. I've spoken here before. Before I get to the brunt of my speech, I just wanted to say, please, to the council members, from what you hear today, please take the time to actually search up statistics from reputable sites such as the United Nations, as well as the World Health Organization. Many facts being spewed here today are actually not facts, they're made up. As the United Nations said, there was no actual evidence presented that UNRWA is actually using, its funding is actually being used to commit any crimes in the area. So, why is it your issue here? Well, first off, what's been mentioned a lot is it's a divisive, it's a decisive issue, and because of that, we should not take a stance on it. However, if we remember our past and our history here, especially here in our city, where we're a bit up north, Champaign-Urbana, we had the issue of discrimination, slavery, and other stuff all across our nation, and we did take a stand. And it was not a national thing, it was a very dividing thing, and it did cause a lot of problems. However, looking back at the history books, we see that it's right. A genocide being committed where many, many people are dying, and we could see the majority of them are children, is an issue that will be looked at in textbooks by our children, and we will be judged on it for our actions at that time. Why do we care about this specific issue? Why are we coming out for this specific issue when there are so many other humanitarian issues in the world? Simple, because it's our money, my tax dollars. I'm working my butt off in order to pay for weapons to go and be dropped. Weapons that, for example, this morning at 10:30 a.m., killed eight more of my family members, three of them children. What did they do? They did nothing. I don't know why they're killed. Why are they having bombs dropped on them daily? I have no idea. They've been living in fear, and they kept calling us, telling us, "Oh, we're gonna be scared, we're scared, we're scared." And boom, now we have more of them dead. And the funny thing is, they don't count as statistics. Why? Because they didn't die in the hospital, they died in the house. And in fact, I even have the video on my phone that actually shows them pulling them out of the rubble. These are the things that your community members are waking up to every single day, and this is why we keep coming on a weekly basis to discuss this issue. In terms of where we should go from here, I'm hoping the council members of Urbana decide to speak up for a ceasefire. It is also affecting your children in the school districts. We saw literally in the school district next door, Champaign, we saw a teacher speak up and show a video of Hamas on October 7th, and then after that, one of the students asked, "Well, what did they look like?" And he looks around the room and he goes, "Oh, isn't your family from Palestine?" What ends up happening? Bullying to an unprecedented level, and now I'm having children because I'm a youth worker. I'm having children call me in the night telling me I'm scared to go to school. How could I hide that I'm Muslim besides not wearing a hijab? Because that girl was not even wearing a hijab. This is the issue, and this is why it is our issue here in Urbana. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Robert Silverman. The first time I spoke to this council was January 16th, 2024. The second time was February 5th. Today is my third time about this issue. I've been here before for other issues. I think I thank the council for helping me learn the difference between writing and speaking. They are different. As I thought this through, I began to see the gorgeous gift you have given us, residents of these twin cities right in the heart of the America we all love. I am here to speak my truth, not your truth, not our truth, not their truth. I work as a behavioral health counselor, and I know a lot about behavior. I can describe behavior from its smallest components to the large unimaginable brutal things that happen to individuals. Each individual has their own sense of deep self. From this self, we also grow behaviors. Week after week, we've come here to exercise our freedom of speech, but we are also behaving in public. We stand in line politely. At the end of a meeting of frustrations, we all go home, and as far as I know, not one fistfight has broken out in the parking lot. In the council's wisdom, the chambers are in the same building of the police department. Why? Because in America, the First Amendment, also known as freedom of speech, has as its dance partner, an amazing thing called the rule of law. Freedom and laws go hand in hand as if they are married. I've been learning this again and again, and I thank the council for teaching me this lesson once again. I love my job. As the cliche goes, it's good, it's bad, and sometimes it's ugly, but to me, it feels like sacred space. I work with individuals who have suffered unimaginable horrors at the hands of the people they were meant to trust. They suffered most at the hands of people who were supposed to love them, but sometimes those who love us, sometimes parents, sometimes clergy, sometimes teachers, or friends, or neighbors. We humans sometimes get brutalized by the very people who are supposed to teach us how to be human beings. The council and its wisdom was purposefully not a discussion. It was only this place where each individual could speak freely. That's free speech in America. Free speech, though, doesn't live alone. Free speech involves one side getting up week after week and saying the most heinous and horrible lies about Jews, about Israel, about my people, even to suggest I don't have the right to defend myself. After 2,000 years of abuse, a country I don't live in, but I've been to, I've lived in, in 1948, this tiny sliver of a country named Israel found its voice to defend itself, and Jews are forever different.
Thank you, sir.
I'm glad to be on that side of life, free to defend myself. Thank you.
My name is Dua Aldesuke, I'm a local CU resident. Yesterday, we woke up to the news of a US service member setting himself on fire in a form of extreme protest. Although I do not condone such acts, nor is it necessarily my place to, I can understand the desperation he must have been feeling. The desperation to feel as though nothing is working, the desperation of not being held, not being heard, the desperation of calling your representatives for 143 days, the desperation of trying to get the media to cover the stories appropriately without bias, the desperation that so many people in this very room feel even today on day 143 of the indiscriminate bombing of the 25-mile Gaza Strip. I want to thank every single person who takes time out on a Monday evening to come here. We are seeing a beautiful cross-community movement building, and so I want to thank you for coming here to discuss a simple call to action, to put a ceasefire resolution on an agenda. There are no two sides to killing 14,000 children. To address the plan for a ceasefire resolution rewrite, almost 70 ceasefire resolutions have been passed statewide, in larger cities like Chicago, in smaller cities, and some of the cities around us. And just about every ceasefire resolution that has passed across the nation, regardless of how it watered down Israel's violence or how hard it condemned Hamas, was criticized with the same criticism you've heard here of this resolution. It's divisive. Even on January 8th, when the resolution was introduced to the council, many were opposed to it without even reading it. A criticism of Israel, regardless of how justified, is never met with reflection and thoughtfulness. It is immediately seen as hateful, just like my presence and existence as a Palestinian has always been. Thank you.
Unfortunately, I will not be saying my name tonight out of concern for my safety, because many individuals in this room have come and harassed me in public areas, so I feel best that I do not mention my name. However, I am a resident of Champaign-Urbana, I was born and raised here my whole life, and I am the granddaughter of NEKBA survivors. And the NEKBA, if you don't know, is the forced expulsion of 750,000 Palestinians, including my grandparents. Many people here think that is a beautiful day where a genocidal colonial state was created. The numbers are staggering, but behind each statistic lies a human being, a mother, a father, a child, desperately in need of our help. As you consider the gravity of the situation, let us not forget that these are not just figures on a page, they represent real lives hanging in the balance. Imagine if you will, the magnitude of suffering endured by the people of Gaza. More than 28,000 lives lost, 70,000 individuals gravely injured, and over 11,000 in critical condition, begging for urgent medical attention. The spread of infectious diseases with 700,000 affected and 8,000 cases of viral hepatitis poses an additional health threat that cannot be ignored. Think about the 60,000 pregnant women facing severe health risks with the sharp rise in miscarriages and postpartum complications. Consider the 350,000 patients with chronic diseases and 10,000 cancer patients suffering due to a lack of essential medications. These are not just numbers, they are our fellow human beings enduring unimaginable pain and suffering. Surgeons are faced to perform amputations without anesthesia, and medical personnel struggle to treat the wounded without basic antiseptics. The urgency of the situation cannot be overstated. Now, you might wonder, what does this have to do with Urbana, Illinois? While the distance between us may not seem vast, the principles of humanity and compassion know no boundaries. Just as we would rally to aid our own community members in times of crisis, so too must we extend our support to those suffering in Gaza. Imagine if we're our own city facing such dire circumstances, would we not expect the solidarity and assistance of the international community? Let us lead by example and stand on the side of justice and compassion. Let us urge our leaders to support a ceasefire resolution for the people of Gaza, ensuring that essential medical aid reaches those who need it most. The time for action is now. Let us not be bystanders to this humanitarian catastrophe, but rather let us be agents of change, advocating for peace, justice, and the protection of innocent lives. From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
All right, I was just trying to make sure if anyone else needed to go first, they could. My name is Lila Leopold, I'm an Urbana resident in Ward 4, and I think the testimonies tonight across the board make it clear that there are so many difficulties that face us in the world and here in all our daily lives. The very least, we need to take good steps forward towards grieving together, and if we keep relying on comparing numbers, we all know, everyone who's lost a loved one, that we cannot compare suffering, there should not be a magic number that shocks someone into their humanity. And for the sake of our young people in the room here, including us, I don't know, you know, how old do you think I am, or you consider that I would be, but to build, you know, a better future together, it's really important that we don't remain on the sidelines or silent. We really, your constituents really, really need your support across the board, and I'm currently grieving deeply for the death of my grandmother in Milwaukee, who was able to live a peaceful life until just a few weeks shy of her 100th birthday, and I wish the same for each and every one of my neighbors here and for their families here and abroad. We are an international country. People have lost hundreds of family members in this conflict, hundreds. This is a deeply local and personal issue for so many of your constituents. Silence is terrifying, silence is cruel, silence is not the culmination and evenly-balanced sum of having supposed sides speaking against one another. We're ancient neighbors, and we're not divided on the basics of peace. We have members, you know, and we're also fully able to comprehend difficult situations. We comprehend them with our bones, with our history, and we also live in a complicated country built on stolen land with slave labor, in which people live vastly different socioeconomic realities and have vastly different life expectancies based on race, class, gender, sexual identity, et cetera, et cetera. And we're gathered here today, no less, on a 70-degree day in what's supposed to be a winter in February. So there's no shortage of issues, we could direct our funds from war towards issues in this community, and they are issues. And sitting back and trying to make us miraculously come up with a resolution that will satisfy each and every person in this town is also not acceptable. Watching and waiting for us to split ourselves further apart, thank you.
My name is Yusuf Sob, and I am a lifelong resident of Urbana. I am a product of Urbana schools. I went to Yankee Ridge, Urbana Middle School and High School, and I graduated from the university. I briefly, well, for a decade, I worked in California, and I just moved back, and I just wanted to say that I am extremely disappointed with what I've seen out of the last few weeks. I know Urbana to be a place that advocates for peace, that advocates for humanity and human rights, and coming back and seeing silence and complicitness has been deeply hurtful. I have a friend who is an ER doctor, who is in a mission right now in Gaza, and he is urging everybody, "Please do what you can, stop the hurt, we need basic supplies to flow in." So please, inspect your moral conscience and do the right thing. Let's sign for a ceasefire. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jake McGinty. I've been here, every meeting but one since the resolution has been proposed, and I can't help but feel like there's some unspoken kind of tacit agreement that you're not going to vote on this, and it feels very opaque and untransparent, and I feel like the people of Urbana deserve better. I'm a Jew in Urbana, and I grew up as a Jew here, and I have reached out to the Champaign-Urbana Jewish Federation after giving my first talk at the first meeting that was proposed, where I supported Ben's resolution then, and I support it now, the same amount. Didn't hear back from the CUJF. I think that there's a resolution on the table now that you guys can vote on, and it's just so obvious that there are enough people here that care about it that will keep coming, I'm gonna keep coming, that it's offensive that you're not gonna at least say why you're not gonna vote on it, that you're not gonna vote on it for no, that you're not gonna show where you stand on this issue. I think all of us are, you know, opaquely are not losing faith in the local government by letting this stand for weeks and weeks while everyone here feels the pain as strongly as we do. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Hi, my name's Camille Cobb. I live in Champaign, and I spend a lot of time in Urbana as well.
I live in Champaign, and I spend a lot of time in Urbana as well. I want to start by addressing the issue of the proposal to essentially subsidize airline companies. I hope none of you are seriously considering this. Why would we subsidize them if they fail? But then, like, we don't benefit if they are successful and make profits. Also, like, I would love it to be easier to get in and out of Champaign-Urbana, but I'd rather do that with more environmentally friendly modes of transit. Yeah, absurd. So, or yeah, we could spend some of that money directly on people who live here. That'd be better. Yeah. I want to go on. On October 7th, around 12,000 people were killed in Israel. I mourn for them. And since then, 30,000 people have been killed in Gaza. I mourn for them as well. It shouldn't be difficult or divisive to stand against this kind of massive bloodshed, this genocide. On January 6th, the ICJ ruled that Israel must take all possible measures to prevent genocidal acts. As outlined in the 1948 Genocide Convention, they must ensure that their military does not carry out the aforementioned actions. They must prevent the destruction of evidence of war crimes in Gaza and allow fact-finding missions to access it. They must submit a report to the ICJ on how it intends to deliver the above measures within a month, so that's about now. They must prevent and punish incitement of genocidal acts, and they must ensure the delivery of basic services and essential humanitarian aids to civilians in Gaza. Around 3,500 Palestinians have been killed since then, and the situation has become much worse in terms of food, water, and access to healthcare. It's simple. You should pass a ceasefire resolution. That's the way toward peace. Thanks.
Hello. Can you hear me? Oh, okay. Hello, my name is Yasmeen, and I'm a resident of Champaign-Urbana. All I came here to say is what a shame, how shameful is it that we're all sitting here contemplating whether or not people should live? How shameful! In a nutshell, that's what a ceasefire is. It's an end to the bombings and the slaughterings of the masses of innocent human lives. Who the hell says no to a ceasefire? We're all sitting here when we're done answering our ridiculous question of Palestinians in Gaza should be afforded the right to live. We get to go home to our families and our homes and their warmth. We get to put our children to sleep and guarantee that they'll wake up tomorrow in safety, while the mothers and fathers in Gaza scramble for food for their babies before they put them to sleep, left to suffer with the unknown, not knowing if they'll survive or their children will survive, whether or not their children will be among the 25,000-plus children that are orphaned, left with no parents, or be among the 10 children a day who lose a limb. This is not a proportionate war. There is no equal sides when almost 40,000 people are going to die, whether injured or have already been killed or are under the rubble, that have not been found. How dare any of us, in the comfort and privilege that we have, get to make this decision? How dare any of you with degrees in law that took an oath to uphold justice, not unequivocally and unquestionably called for a ceasefire? We're 40,000 humans too late, but we can still call for a ceasefire. If Israel wanted to wipe out Hamas, why are they attacking the civilian population? Why are they not sending special forces or specifically targeting Hamas with the advanced technology and weaponry they always brag about? Why is it that they can specifically target a senior Hamas senior member in Lebanon and wipe him out in a second with their bombs, but lack precision all of a sudden when it comes to bombing Gaza and its civilians? Either they're a pretty unskilled or crappy army, or they're purposely trying to wipe out civilians. You don't have to take my word for it. Take the words of May Golan, the Minister of Social Equity and Women's Rights, who said with her whole chest, "I'm personally proud of the ruins of Gaza," and that every baby, even 80 years from now, will tell their grandchildren, grandchildren, what the Jews did. Take their word for it.
Hi, good evening, City Council. My name is Kermel Alazar. Just want to respond to a few things that were said here earlier. So first of all, again, there was a discussion about the ICJ. And I'll just remind one more time that the ICJ does have the authority to declare a ceasefire, to order a ceasefire. It has not done that. So, you know, I'm sure they have their good reasons why they haven't. About 30,000 dead civilians. So first of all, yes, Israel does have precision weapons, and it does have a high-tech military and so on. But even that, when you have Hamas operatives and Hamas leaders hide within civilian population, embed themselves within civilian population, so it's, they are responsible to the situation at that point. And, you know, and to the question about 30,000 dead, are they all really, all just civilians? Israel is not fighting against Hamas operatives?
Please let the speaker speak.
Okay, I believe this is over now. So out of the 30,000, there are civilian casualties, no doubt about that. But there are also Hamas operatives that are fighters, that are fighting against Israel that are being killed as part of that war. Yes.
This is not a discussion in the room. Please address the council and please let the speaker speak. We don't control the content of the speech in here. Please continue.
Okay.
Stick to the facts, please.
Okay. Thank you. So the next thing, the conflict is 100 years old. There is a conflict in the land of Israel or Palestine, depends how you want to call it, that's going on for 100 years, approximately. But what happened on October 7th, that was actually a war that Hamas started, that war. And there's consequences to what Hamas did. Now, it's important to understand also that there was a ceasefire during a hostage release back a few months back. And who ended that ceasefire? It was Hamas. They started on the seventh or eighth day of that ceasefire. They started again their combat activities that led us back to where we are right now. So now both the U.S. and the European Union are supporting a ceasefire, but they're also supporting the release of immediate, unconditional release of hostages and a, sir, I cannot continue speaking when people are interrupting. I was very respectful, and the clock is still running, so I would appreciate to get at least 30 seconds back.
Please continue.
I asked you, please, to control the crowd, because it's not respectful. I was very respectful to people here. Apparently, the people here are not respectful to other people.
We're trying. Please continue.
Okay, this is a shameful thing. I am very sorry that the people here are behaving in an unbelievable way. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sansa Wala. I'm a resident of Urbana. I support the ceasefire resolution as it's written. I echo what people have been saying here before, that it's ludicrous to be standing here debating quote-unquote "facts" when we know how many people have died and how inhumane the situation is, especially considering how measured the ceasefire resolution is as it stands. It does condemn the war crimes that Hamas has committed. It calls for an end to dehydration, starvation, despair, things that I think are very easy to agree upon and not radical whatsoever. I am a PhD student at the University of Illinois. I'm an instructor there. I'm lucky to have access to a lot of the information that the university provides in terms of third-party peer-reviewed resources, something that has been, I study genocide, colonialism, and communal violence focused in South Asia, but because Islamophobia is a global issue, I feel that I do have Western-backed expertise to offer here. So for if anybody on the city council is confused, feels like this issue is complicated, wants to talk about it more, wants access to university peer-backed reviewed information, please get in touch with me. I'm happy to talk further. I'd like to provide some information based on these kind of sources, specifically about Hamas. Hamas is a political organization. In a peer-reviewed study in 2005 from the Third World Quarterly, we can talk, which talks about how Hamas formed and what its goals are. It talks about both its 1988 charter, which has been mentioned here, as well as its 2017 charter, which focuses on the social welfare and social services that are at the root of Hamas's work. And also, the 2017 charter makes the important clarification that its fight is against the racist, aggressive colonial and expansionist Zionist project of Israel and not against Jews or Jewit-ism. I think all of the city council members are Democrats and would not want to be held to the standards of Democrats of the 1800s. You have to accept that these organizations change and grow over time, and you have to look at what they're saying, what they're fighting for now. If you even have to do that in the face of the extreme human rights violations that we've been seeing here now and since the 1900s, even beyond Gaza Strip, Israel is an apartheid state, even in the West Bank. Again, I'm happy to share more sources on how Israeli citizens are given civilian rights, whereas Palestinian citizens are tried under military law, leading to the detainment of over 800 children without trial just this year. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Soder Popolos, and I live in Champaign-Urbana. And my connection to Urbana is that I work with Urbana students. The first thing I want to point out tonight is the hypocrisy in how the crowd is being controlled. I heard a speaker a few moments ago say that the crowd is being disrespectful, and yet when another public commenter was saying, "Who does not support a ceasefire?" Some folks here in the first two rows turned to each other, and they laughed, and they said, "Hamas." And you didn't say anything. So I was curious why. And I know you can't answer me right now, but I'm just curious why. I support the ceasefire resolution as it's written. I was an elected official, and I understand how difficult it can be to have courage and not only provide representation, but leadership on issues, especially issues that have roots in white supremacy and racism. The vast majority of people do support a ceasefire. That's something that's been established. Both sides here have acknowledged that. That was acknowledged at the last meeting. So I'm asking you to please put it on the agenda and vote. Let us know where you stand so we can be clear. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Maxwell Haines. I'm a resident of Urbana. I want to start with some context. In 1947, the UN split Palestine into two states. That was 3,978 weeks ago. By December of the next year, the Israeli forces and militias had displaced over half of the Palestinian population. During this invasion, dozens of massacres targeting the Palestinian people murdered thousands across the region. This was the first Nakba, ending 3,923 weeks ago. By September of 1982, the IDF had orchestrated massacres across all of Gaza and the West Bank, killing thousands. That was 2,160 weeks ago. From December 2008 to January 2009, the IDF killed thousands more in those two months alone. They destroyed tens of thousands of homes and were found to be using collective punishment, disproportionate force, human shields, white phosphorus, all war crimes. This ended 788 weeks ago. On October 7th, 2023, Hamas attacked Israel, killing nearly 800 civilians, 400 IDF soldiers, and taking 250 hostages. These are also war crimes, war crimes that could have been prevented by better leadership in Israel, given their knowledge of the planned attack over a year earlier. If they had ended the apartheid state, this attack may never have occurred. This was 20 weeks ago. In these last 20 weeks, there have been countless war crimes committed against the Palestinian people throughout Gaza Strip and the West Bank. This began with an invasion of the north of Gaza, pressuring people to the south, where they are now trapped in Rafa. In these last 20 weeks, they have targeted places of worship of all denominations, UN refugee camps, ambulances, hospitals, prevented foreign aid from coming in, and more than 30,000 civilians have been killed by the IDF alone. That's nearly the entire size of the population of Urbana. At the same time, thankfully, 20 weeks, these last 20 weeks, over 70 U.S. cities have passed ceasefire resolutions. Just four weeks ago, the ICJ determined that Israel is committing war crimes against Palestinian people. And I bring all this context together because I feel like some people in this room fail to understand the gravity of the situation and the historical context they're in. Simply put, how many more weeks are you going to wait? Everyone on this board knows what historians will teach us about this genocide, every one of you. Don't wait until it's politically expedient for you to take a stand. Be a leader, because that is what we elected you for. So that you care and that you want to make a stand, a ceasefire resolution is the bare minimum that you can do as government officials to demonstrate your commitment to peace and allyship with oppressed people of the globe. So how many more weeks do you want to sit through this? We all are going to come back, week after week and month after month. We are all going to show up at the ballot box. We are going to make it impossible to remain neutral in these times of oppression. Do your jobs, be leaders, represent your people. I'll see you next week.
Does anyone else wish to address the city council? Okay. One more.
Hi, I had a speech prepared, but I kind of just want to scratch it. I think I speak on behalf of everyone here that I am completely and utterly appalled that you are, you all are allowing people to spread hate speech in this room. That man right there just equated the citizens of Gaza. He referred to them as not innocent, referring to children as terrorists. That man right there, that man in the back just stated false statistics. We both know how damaging. Your wife assaulted me at a protest. His wife repeatedly assaulted me at a protest.
Quiet, please. Let the speaker speak.
These are violent people that you are letting stand here and speak. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
My name is Timur Ogberg. I hope I can speak. I live in Champaign. I didn't come here planning to speak. However, the degree of tensions that I witness here just appalls me. I was here two weeks ago, and now I see a marked contrast of what used to be. I want to address one of the topics raised by one of the preceding speakers, namely that if the ceasefire comes into force, then there will be no more killing. Well, we see the amount of hate in this room. For this reason, I urge you to oppose the ceasefire resolution. Thank you. And it was just a really great event where we celebrated excellence and scholarship. I want to thank Representative Carol Ammons and County Clerk Erin Ammons for attending, as well as Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, who got her flowers that night. And the young people, one by one, gave her a rose, as she so richly deserves. I want to thank Elder Smolindikar for being there. I want to thank Coach Verdel Jones and his lovely wife for attending. And also, Champaign Police Chief Timothy Tyler for being there. It was just a terrific event. I want to thank Pastor Angel Johnson and her husband Ernest. They do a wonderful program, did a wonderful job, and thanks for letting me speak.
Does anyone else still wish to say something? James.
Yeah, I would like to remind everyone that this Saturday is Read Across America, which is a great event that occurs at Lincoln Square. Kids can get a book and do a bunch of activities and get some stories read to them. It's a great opportunity where the community comes together to support literacy for our kids, and I hope to see you there.
Grace.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the public for your continued input. I agree that by not directly addressing this issue of a potentially ceasefire that many people are interested in, that we're creating more frustration, and I agree with that frustration. I was hopeful, mostly at the beginning of the meeting, to see a little more alignment in the public comment tonight. I agree that this is a tragic and urgent issue, and I think that a resolution from the people of a complex group of individuals of Urbana does need to come from the people. And that would hopefully send a message further up in the system to the people actually making that decision, with the awareness that any council decision here isn't going to be a main deciding factor on national actions, and I agree that it adds to make a statement. This issue is important. It deeply impacts many residents. I support peace and a resolution for a ceasefire, and I ask for some understanding from the public, speaking for myself, as us trying to do the right thing, which is hard to figure out as we're trying to do our best to represent everyone. I'm not planning to run again, just as any threats to not vote for me again is totally fine. I'm trying to do my best to be a public servant, and I think we all are, and it's a difficult position to be in. I still support the community coming together to try and agree on some other version. I think if some version comes to council, the people, you all, will not be a part of the discussion. We will have the discussion, and we will vote on it. You will have your three minutes, and you will not be a part of that discussion. While I appreciate the input that's been given here the past few weeks, I see it mostly as different sides reiterating their points and not coming together on an agreement or understanding. I need to feel a little bit more agreement from the people that we're representing on some specific version of a resolution to confidently pass that as representative of the entire city. I think that ideally such community conversation would be organized by the community, and council members can help. I hear other council members are talking to others, trying to work on some facilitation. And in that, I'm not trying to deflect responsibility by this. I think that it's because I'm not hopeful in the city administration organizing such an event after the mayor's disapproval of discussing this in the first place. I don't think that that's going to move forward in that way. I would ask that it could, that we could help to facilitate this community conversation and not just put it completely on you all, but I don't know how to do that. So again, I'm willing to try and help organize that, and I'm trying to figure that out. I support the council talking about this, and I think that would be important in trying to facilitate a conversation, and I would like to propose a discussion on this next week at the Cal meeting, or when we can find some time in our agenda, because I think it's important to talk about it and try and see if we're interested in facilitating a conversation or bringing such a resolution to council. Thank you.
Any other comments? Sharice.
I just wanted to say that on Friday, March 1, there will be a community meeting for Ellis Drive subdivision regarding the sewer sanitary project that is going to go ahead. And that is—it's an informational meeting as well, and it will be at 5:00 at Dr. King's School. And I'm hoping that everyone from the Ellis subdivision area will attend. Thank you.
Any other comment? Who's left?
I do want to make a comment. One is, it is time to resolve this issue. We've heard week after week of comments. We've heard the pain, the experience, the trauma, and it's escalating in this room. And obviously, this is not—the—it's not going to resolve itself. I had hoped that the community could come together to have a discussion, and I don't think that's going to happen. I appreciate Stav's leadership in offering to do that. We will—we will work with him and whoever works with him, and we will address this topic, and there should be some more information forthcoming in a few days. This cannot go on any longer. You do deserve to know where people stand. So we will bring this to a resolution shortly.
We'll move on to reports of the Committee of the Whole.
Okay, bringing forth the agenda from last week, the report of Committee of the Whole.
May I do a point of order to pull one of the items? I'd like to pull Item J to the regular agenda.
Item J is Resolution Number 2024-02-004R, which is the resolution authorizing contribution to a community minimum revenue guarantee for leisure air service at Willer Airport.
Okeydokey. Ordinance number 2020 on the consent agenda, ordinance number 2024-02-010, an ordinance approving a major variance, Bobcat Duplex at 408 West Main.
Excuse me. Could you please have your conversation out in the hall? Thank you.
Or can I do a privileged motion for a five-minute recess? That's my motion.
Five-minute recess?
Yes. My understanding, privileged motion is in you can throw it out at any time?
Is there a second?
I don't understand what a privileged motion is.
Yeah.
That's how it's worded in the procedures, to my understanding, meaning that you can—anyone can throw it out at any time, right?
And recesses may be taken at any time, so if there is a motion on the floor to take a recess, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Would we like to do a voice vote?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I think the ayes have it. Five-minute recess. We'll reconvene at—
8:45.
8:45. It's time. Go ahead.
Okeydokey. Here we go again. Reporting from Committee of the Whole, last week, consent agenda, ordinance number 2024-02-010, an ordinance approving a major variance, Bobcat Duplex at 408 West Main, case number ZBA 2023 MAJ-5, ordinance number 2024-02-09, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning map, Urbana-Champaign sanitary district plan, case number 2082M23, two lots north of East Park Street, along North Cottage Grove Avenue, ordinance number 2024-02-005, an ordinance repealing Urbana City Code, Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 5, Section 2-95, mark it at the Square Advisory Board. Resolution number 2024-02-010R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement, First Followers CHDO Developer PY 2023. Resolution number 2024-02-007R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement, Habitat for Humanity of Champaign County, CHDO Developer PY 2023. Resolution number 2024-02-008R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement, Habitat for Humanity for Champaign County, CHDO Operating PY 2023. Resolution number 2024-02-010R, a resolution certifying a home housing development organization for the Urbana Home Consortium, First Followers CHDO Certification 2023. Resolution number 2024-02-006R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement, First Followers CHDO Operating PY 2023. Resolution number 2024-02-007R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement, Habitat for Humanity of Champaign County, CHDO Developer PY 2023. Resolution number 2024-02-008R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement, Habitat for Humanity for Champaign County, CHDO Operating PY 2023. Resolution number 2024-02-009R, a resolution certifying a home housing development organization for the Urbana Home Consortium, First Followers CHDO Certification 2023. Resolution number 02024-02-011R, a resolution certifying a community housing development organization for the Urbana Home Consortium, Habitat for Humanity of Champaign County, CHDO Certification PY 2023. Bringing that forward for approval for the entire consent agenda.
Is there a second? Seconded by James. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
For our regular agenda items, we have Resolution Number 2024-02-005R, an ordinance approving an amendment to a redevelopment agreement, Icon Hospitality LLC, Urbana Landmark Hotel. Is there any—is there a motion? I'm sorry. Is there a second?
Seconded by Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice. I do want to note that you—city council received additional information that was requested about the hotel Royer financing that was emailed out on Friday, and there's also a copy of it in front of you tonight. And I will note that the item on the agenda tonight is simply the redevelopment agreement extension, and when it comes to actually discussing transferring funds and financing, there will be a whole lot more information provided to council at that time. But this gives you an excellent overview of the mechanics of that.
Grace.
Thank you for the continued information. And could you just clarify, are any TIF funds being drawn from Central TIF to support this project incentive?
Will, would you like to answer? How about coming up here, Will, so that folks at home can see who's talking? Otherwise, it's a disembodied voice. Thank you.
So the answer to your question is yes and no. I'll go through that real quickly here. So here's just a kind of infographic that tries to show a little bit what's happening with the incentive. So the top half of this slide shows the revenue generated by the project. So you have your general fund revenue with the new revenue from the project in that larger circle on the outside, same thing for the TIF in yellow. And then you have our consolidated cash account, which this is for all of our funds that we have in your budget. We keep it—we don't—each one doesn't have its own bank account, so we would borrow from that consolidated cash account if we borrow from ourselves. The mechanics of this is the Central TIF acts as the debt vehicle, so it accepts the loan from consolidated cash accounts, and then that issues that incentive to the developers. The developer, from their perspective, they view it as TIF funds, although the TIF funds immediately previously disbursed from somewhere else. So technically, yes, money goes into the TIF and then out of the TIF, but it's not the existing TIF fund balance—I'm sorry—the existing TIF fund balance, which is that yellow part. So if you look at the TIF fund, whatever the balance is today, that's that yellow circle in the middle. So we're not drawing from that fund balance, we're borrowing from our consolidated cash accounts. Does that answer your question?
Maybe it does.
James.
If I could try to say a little bit more, the existing TIF money is not going to pay for this, but there will be—the TIF account will take some money from the loan and give it to the developers, and there will be additional TIF money because there will be additional value taxed in the area, and that will contribute to paying back the costs, right?
Yes, I think so. And so I guess the other slide—
So the existing TIF money that came from other sources, from existing valuations, will be available for other projects in the TIF district. It's not going to be used at all for this. This will only be money from the loan and money that is additionally generated in the TIF that will be involved with the hotel.
Yes.
Is that the fair way to say it?
Yeah, and I guess I should have led with the first slide. So the loan, from a TIF perspective, it counts as revenue, and then it counts as expenses. So it's a net zero to the TIF today, and then we pay those debt payments over a 10-year period of time from those incremental taxes from the hotel itself. So if you imagine the 50, 60, 100 other properties in the TIF, the funds, the TIF increment that they've been paying in the TIF is unaffected in this project, if that's kind of the root of your question.
Any other discussion? Grace.
So in this scenario, which I—I'm trying really hard to understand. If worst-case scenario, the hotel closes after a year and we don't recoup the money that we thought, where does—where's that money owed? Like, do we pay it back into the TIF? That would be to a borrowing that's just from our own cash accounts. Like, where would—who'd we owe money if—if we don't make it back for some worst-case scenario reason?
I don't have the technical answer to that one. I think that might be—it probably depends on how we borrow it, and the little fact sheet I sent, when we borrow funds, council approves that. So when we borrow from the consolidated cash account, finance will have more details about all those little logistics. I don't—how we would pay in the event of a default, from what source, I don't have that question—or that answer off the top of my head.
The consolidated cash account is a city internal account, right?
Yes.
And we would even approve borrowing from an internal account?
Correct.
Okay, so it's—sounds like it's not all the details figured out and set in stone on where that's coming from? That would be in a future agreement? Is that right?
The act of issuing borrowing is—requires council action, so whether it's from an outside source or an internal source, that'll need to be approved by council, and then the specifics, repayment schedule presumably, and all the other details of those loans would be approved at that time. And I don't have those specific details right now.
Thank you. I appreciate that information. I'll look forward to learning more. I do want to understand this better, and also understanding that this is not the exact issue for tonight, is the extension. issue for tonight, is the extension, which I think this is relative context, but as far as the extension, I am okay with what we have on the table on the floor tonight.
Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next on the agenda, regular agenda is Resolution Number 2024-02-004R, a resolution authorizing contribution to a community minimum revenue guarantee, MRG, for leisure air service at Willard Airport.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by James. Discussion. I would note that the council had also requested additional information on the economic impact of the airport, and that was provided by Volair Aviation Consultants and the Willard Airport Advisory Committee, and that was sent this morning, and there's a copy at the diocesan for you as well. Discussion, James.
Yeah, I, we had some public comment on this tonight, which I'm not, I'm not sure exactly where those individuals were coming from. I've flown in and out of Willard Airport on TWA, US Air, Northwest, Delta in two different instances, United in an instance. I think I even flew in and out of Champaign-Urbana on Ozark Airlines a really long time ago. The matter of the airport, which I started paying a lot more attention to the operation of back in 2010 when I joined the county board, the airport is always engaged in, somebody mentioned, you know, more reputable airlines. I don't, I don't think that's necessarily the right way to talk about it, but the airport has always been trying to get additional routes and additional airlines through other means, and we have a huge grant right now that would support a route to Washington, DC, from the federal government, if we could persuade American Airlines or another carrier to do so. Most of the, most of the issue with that right now are lack of pilots and lack of gate time in Reagan National Airport in DC, which is where American has its hub. They don't, they don't go into Dulles from a place like here, but that is, I mean, that's just one aspect of air travel. We've seen Peoria and Bloomington and Springfield have arrangements with leisure airlines, which just means they don't, they don't fly every day both ways. They fly usually at the, on the weekends, you know, maybe four, four trips a week. They're focused on getting people to a getaway. Some people may come here on it, but when people are thinking about getting on it, going on a getaway, they're not, they're, they are looking for a bargain, for a cheaper rate. We're not going to see something like a Spirit Airlines coming in here and doing, doing regular flights to this place, but we might, we might find, looking at the numbers that they presented, we might find enough folks from Central Illinois who go to Florida on a regular basis that could take advantage of the potential Orlando route or the potential Las Vegas route. And so revenue guarantee is, is about providing a safety net. It is, in fact, a safety net for a company that's going to take a chance on making a business work here. The best possible circumstance is that it doesn't require any of the revenue guarantee, that, that the flights make exactly what the airline or more, what the airline proposes is going to make. Somebody mentioned, like, you know, we don't get anything out of it if they succeed. Yes, we do get something out of it. We get a resource for our community and for our airport to an additional place to travel. So that is of value. The people that are working for this airline at the airport will be people earning a paycheck, which is of value. Any, what, I don't, I don't count on there being a lot of people heading from Las Vegas to Champaign-Urbana or heading from Orlando to Champaign-Urbana, but there may be some of them, and from, from what those are, that'll be of value. So I believe this is a reasonable risk to take at, you know, $50,000 out of a million-dollar pool for Urbana to participate in, so that's why I'll be supporting it.
Any other comments? Sharice.
Just to kind of piggyback on what James was saying about, you know, the leisure airfare, I've known several people that have, had gone cruises that go out of Florida and those particular airports specifically, and so they often have to drive to Chicago to get a flight out in, or Indianapolis, occasionally Bloomington. And if we can make it just a little easier for the citizens of Urbana-Champaign and the Champaign County area to actually have a flight closer and take flight out of there, and out of Willard, I think that would be extremely helpful and extremely beneficial to the city of Urbana as well.
Any other comments? Grace.
Thank you. A question first is, would we see that agreement again? What I'm reading in here is that Section 2 is saying that we'll put the $50,000 in the FY '25 budget, and then Section 3 saying that we authorize said execution of said commitment on behalf of city, blah, blah, blah. So it sounds to me that we wouldn't see or agree on the actual agreement that Willard makes with whatever air carrier? Could you clarify, please?
My understanding is that the University of Illinois will be negotiating, on behalf of Willard Airport, which is owned by the U of I, will be negotiating the agreement with the airline, but the councils will not be individually approving the agreement. What we are approving tonight is commitment of the funds, which will be kept in city accounts in the Department of, I was going to say Human and Community Development, that's my old university office, Community Development Services, and if our funds are needed, they will be invoiced in proportion to our contribution. And it's quite likely, or quite possible, some or all of the funds won't be needed, we'll see. But no, the council will not be voting on the agreement with the airlines.
I still had discussion, if I may. I, I appreciate some more information that they gave us on tax revenue. I still take some issue with how it's being advertised, that all of this is indirect tax revenue, which I think is also important, but not very transparent in how I'm reading a lot of the information that we've been given, seeing how they don't pay property taxes. And I think that there are some valid things here about 423 jobs on the field, and that they expect that this would be another 20 on airport jobs. I think those are more promising, concrete numbers of a contribution in my mind. I would appreciate some more time for information. I have heard some concerns and accusations from the community. Y'all know I usually have more questions and would like more information. I would be inclined to, I would support sending this back to COW, but unless anyone wants to speak up in support, I imagine there's not support of that. But yeah, I would appreciate some more time. I think this is something to consider since it's new, and get some more information and be responsible with this taxpayer money.
Mary Alice.
I am not in support of sending this back to COW for these reasons. Specifically, I know that there's been some mention about property taxes. The vast majority of what we would get would be hotel taxes and sales tax, property taxes. Everybody knows we get between, what, 13 and 14% of property tax. The only thing I can see in which we add in people who come to this community to be able to work remotely, I think there was an argument about that, but really what I see is the ability to increase our hotel tax revenue and sales tax revenue. I do think, and along with James, I've been in this community for a really long time, and the first time I flew was, I was five years old. In 1976, I flew directly from Washington, DC to Champaign-Urbana to start kindergarten. So I've been on a lot of different flights here. I think it is unfortunate that United pulled out. I think it is good for the public if we have different options, and I think it's also a good thing in order to be able to keep people in our community. I know that it's not uncommon for people to retire and live here, and I think giving people options in terms of where they can go, whether it's Orlando or Las Vegas or something, also increases likelihood that people will continue to retire here in this community. So for this reason, I'm in support of it.
Mary Alice, would you take the chair?
I'd take the chair. The chair recognizes Diane.
Thank you. Big picture, this is the airport's and the community's effort to respond to the rapidly changing situation we have in the airline industry. Things are not the way they were five years ago, or 10 years ago, or 50 years ago, and in order for the airport to remain competitive, for it to be a part, a vital part of our community, this was considered to be a reasonable approach to incentivizing and helping attract a leisure service airline, which is a service we don't have at all, and people are leaving our community and seeking it in other places. $50,000 is a relatively low amount compared to the overall pool, and it's a reasonable investment in, in doing our part to help maintain the vitality of this airport, to improve quality of life for folks, to give people another choice, and frankly, to make air travel a little bit less expensive, especially to some of these destinations. We're doing our best to attract air service between here and Washington, DC, and I know the airport works constantly to try to get major carriers, but this is just a different world, and for us to remain competitive at all, it is time-sensitive. April 1st was the last possible date. We need to have these commitments in place as soon as possible. The sooner these commitments are in place, the sooner the folks at Willard can start negotiating or seeking the, an air carrier. Everyone else is doing this, and I hate to use that kind of analogy, but it's true. Every airport, or almost every airport in the region, is doing these sorts of incentives. That's just the nature of where we are today. So this is a reasonable approach to maintain, to help maintain the vitality of the airport, and I urge you to support it.
Would you like the chair back?
I'll take it back.
All right.
Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
No.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. That ends business for the, well, it doesn't end business. There are no reports of special committees, reports of officers, there are none. We now have a closed session, which is collective bargaining negotiations pursuant to 5 ILCS Could I have a motion to go into closed session?
Move to go into closed session.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by James. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. And for public's information, once we come out of closed session, we will adjourn, so there's no further business before the council, after the closed session. Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to come back into open session.
I move we go back into open session.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Do we need a roll call, or can we? Roll call. All those in favor, please say aye.
Roll call. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yeah.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Sorry it's late. And with no further business before the council, we are adjourned.